This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, April 16th. Please stand for our invocation led by Pastor John C. George, Episcopal Church of the Good Shepherd, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
And it's a pleasure to be with you all here this morning. The tradition that you have in opening your meetings with prayer goes back a way long way. In fact, the Romans started their sessions with worship. Why, they probably had a reign of more than a millennia. So we're in good company. But then, we also have Paul who told us about this unknown God, which we claim and celebrate today, and in whose name I open up this prayer. So let pray. Heavenly Father, we come into your presence seeking your guidance and counsel. You are always present, but we humbly ask to come into your presence. Fill us with your non-anxious presence. Have your Holy Spirit fall afresh on us, particularly our elected officials here today, as they gather to do the work entrusted to them. Open their hearts and minds, dear Lord, to your peace, your shalom, especially to the concerns of the needy and the hurting, that they may do your will and faithfully represent the city, the communities and districts in their charge, and effectually deliberate solutions for the circumstances that affect all the people in this great city. This we ask in Jesus. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands united on our God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd ask that we would observe a moment of silence, not in loss of any particular person, but of some very historic places. One being, I'm sure all of us saw the burning and the fire there at the historic Notre Dame Cathedral in France. And there have been three historically African churches burned in Louisiana over the last week. Ask that we would remember all of those who hold those places of worship near and dear in their hearts, and who see their loss as a loss of a loved one. Let's remember everyone who's suffering through those tragedies. Thank you.
Roll call, Vice President Manzi.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Small.
Here.
Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're happy to see each and every one of you. The rules of the council are as follows. We first would ask that you would silence and or turn off all of your electronic device. Anyone that's here to speak on an agenda must sign in indicating what resolution ordinance or appeal that you would like to comment on. When addressing the council, we ask that you clearly state for the record both your name and your address. Anyone who'd like to speak to a non-agenda item must contact the clerk's office before the Thursday preceding the Tuesday in which you'd like to speak at 2:00. Your commentary must be pertinent to City of Mobile business. If you don't follow the rules, you won't be able to address the council. We allow everyone five minutes. At the end of the fourth minute, you'll hear the sounding of a bell that indicates your last 62 seconds. The next bell indicates that you need to take your seat. We ask for, the core purpose is that there be no undue applause and/or public outcry. All statements need to be made to myself, who serves as chair. If there are any council persons who wish to respond, they'll have that opportunity. Those are the rules of the Mobile City Council in this particular meeting, and we certainly are appreciative of your interest in municipal government. Name of City Clerk?
Approval of minutes of April 9th. So move.
Second.
We properly moved to second in the discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, minutes are approved.
Communications from the mayor.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Good to see everybody this morning. First order of business would be to call on Director Barber to recognize our Officer of the Month.
You know, to have the honor of recognizing Officer Tiffany Monti for distinguishing herself in rendering service to the City of Mobile during the month of March. She is Mobile Police Department's Officer of the Month for the month of March. But some of the activities that she was involved in, she initiated a traffic stop and march and smelled the odor of marijuana coming from the vehicle. As she approached it, the occupants were detained and the vehicle was searched. They found a large bag filled with marijuana, 25 Xanax bars, and a .44 caliber handgun, which was stolen last year in 2018. The two subjects were arrested for warrants, including attempted burglary, as well as the stolen weapon. And her dedication in patrolling her bead and being proactive is what really led to that arrest. Two weeks later, she was checking in the area of Langin Park for suspicious activity when she rolled up on an occupied vehicle. She observed the driver of that vehicle throw a handgun from that car. She was able to arrest him on several violations for federal probation, where he was on probation for other firearms, federal firearms charges, and then taken to Metro Jail. But her enthusiasm, her excellence in her performance, her initiative is very well. This is the second time that she has been the Officer of the Month of Mobile. Mobile's been her three years of service. And so incredible, proactive, she loves her job. Her father is a retired police officer, as well as Birmingham area, and then Foley. And so we're welcome to present you with Officer Monti.
Congratulations.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate you guys recognizing us. It means a lot to us. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Officer. Officer, you're the only policeman in my five years that has made a comment. So thank you for doing that. Maybe you've broken the ice. Thank you very much. I knew it would take a tough young lady to do that. So thank you. Last week, had a great week. Had the opportunity to go to what is called the Sea Trades Conference, which was held in Miami. This is a conference where all the industry, all the cruise industry, every cruise line sends representatives there, all the ports where cruises embark from, and ports of call where they go into the port with their cruisers. Huge convention. Our purpose was to make sure that we cruise ship, but also to see if we can add to what we have. You know, the biggest challenge we have in the City of Mobile, this is not new information, but they continue to tell us, and that is the cruisers that get on the ship in Mobile, on the Fantasy, compared to other ships, our folks don't spend as much money on the ship, buying beverages, gambling, and so forth. So we are focused on trying to do some target marketing into pockets and areas geographically that we think will find people that will spend more money to make sure that Carnival stays here. They're completely satisfied with the service. Matter of fact, what we are known as, the folks that are working the ship, loading it and unloading it, you know, have the best, among the best reputation in the industry. So we're doing a great job with that. We just got to find people that willing to spend a little more money. All in all, a very successful trip. Just FYI, I have my tickets to Chicago for May 1st to fly out on Frontier. Would hope that everybody would consider doing that, not just the people in this room, but for those that may be watching this, you know, it's very important that Frontier, when they leave on May 1st and they continue this flight to Chicago and to Denver, that it be successful. And the only way it's going to be successful is if they have people flying on that airplane. I would encourage business owners, maybe to recognize employees and give them a trip to Chicago or Denver. Think that's a great idea, you know, for, right now, I think we're paying something like $39 or $49 for the ticket to Chicago. Now, the way it works is we would leave on Wednesday and come back on Saturday. But I think I need to be back on Thursday, so I'm going to have to catch another line and come back on Thursday to be here at City Hall. But all in all, a huge opportunity for the city. The new terminal, which is being built at Brookley, it should be completed. Probably, well, it's almost complete right now, but it'll certainly be ready for the first day, first flight flying out on May 1st. In conclusion, I would just hope that everybody would have a blessed Easter, and I hope you enjoy an opportunity to go to the church of your choice and be with family and build memories. Thank you very much.
Mr. Vice President, I'd like to ask the mayor. Was the cruise line excited when they heard that the downtown airport is going to open up?
Yes, they really are. And it's a great point, because that means that especially in the Denver market or the Chicago market, that somebody can have a direct flight coming into Mobile, which will help open up another market for Carnival. So that was a big talking point with the consultant that we talked about, who's kind of up today. He just said that's a huge deal. So yes, good question.
Yeah, appreciate your support and even going down last week, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Richardson and I had attended an event a couple of months ago, Airbus event, and one of the airlines, low-cost airlines, they didn't have no knowledge that we was going to start flying commercial. So when we had mentioned that, you know, we're going to start flying commercial downtown airport, you know, they changed, you know, it was like an excitement, you know, in their eyes, and say, hey, you know, we want to talk more. Why don't you, you know, think about coming down here and, you know, talk to us and, you know, tell us. Yesterday, Councilman Williams and myself went to the downtown airport and had a chance to tour the facility. Very nice, it's unbelievable what done. But less than five minutes to the cruise line, you know, ten, less than 10 minutes, at least, you know, seven minutes to 10 minutes to the cruise line from the airport, I think that would be a great deal, especially with, you know, low-cost airlines, you know, flying out, and they can get from the airport to the cruise line within seven minutes, you know. I think that's a great deal. I believe that we just need to start more, saying, you know, promoting what we have here, like Gulf Quest, the Exploring and stuff, just in case if people come back off on the off day to fly back out from downtown, they have something to do in the city, you know, of Mobile and spend more money while they're here. So if they come back in on a Monday and the flights don't leave till Wednesday, and you know, let's make sure that, you know, we have things to do and fun and excitement for them to do between Monday and Wednesday. Because again, fun is, you know, is money, you know. When you have fun, you know, there is money. But I thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, for all of what you have done for the City of Mobile to move us forward. Thank you again.
Mayor, any more comments? Mayor? Finished, Mayor? Okay. Adoption of the agenda?
So.
Kirk, I move that we suspend the rules and move Resolution 21355 and Consent Resolution 46367 to the front of the agenda.
Second.
Prop motion to second in the discussion. But not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Items are due to the floor.
Would you like to take these now?
Why don't he just let CJ have his?
Just go and read it. Do we need to move, do we need to move, do we need to adopt the agenda as amended?
I think that's, he kind of made that all in one motion.
Okay.
Thank you. You'd like to start with 21355?
355.
Resolution 21355 authorized performance contract with United Methodist inner-city mission to operate Taylor Park Recreation Center, playground swimming pool and waiting pool.
So move.
Second.
Prop motion to second in the discussion.
Yes, Mr. Vice President. Yes, resolution that is before us today is to, you know, give, you know, a performance contract to Taylor Park for $123,500. I have Mr. Tony Allgood and some members of the Odell community that's present. I would like for Mr. Allgood to come down and tell us why is it really important to move this resolution as possible. Reverend Allgood, I'm sorry.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The community that we serve is 81% to 2% low-income households. And we are right next door to Oaklawn Homes, a 100-unit public housing facility. I've been there 15 years now. And we have start, we had a, we have an after-school tutorial program and a summer tutorial and enrichment program. I've been there long enough to see children from our community be the first in their families to graduate from high school and then go on to college. Two that grew up in Oaklawn Homes, in households with single mothers, graduated this past May, and they were in the top three of their class at Williamson High School. One has a full scholarship now to Alabama State, and the other one has gone in the Navy and has worked out a plan with them to get her college degree and her medical degree in the Navy. And after 12 years, she'll owe full benefits. A lot of the children that we see have been traumatized, and we have programs that are addressing that, so the trauma doesn't follow them all the way through their lives. We really appreciate, more than you know, the City of Mobile partnering with us for us to operate the programs at Taylor Park. Thank you so much.
Reverend Allgood, could you tell us some amenities that's at Taylor Park that's available for the community? Some amenities? For instance, can you talk about, you know, one of the newest amenities that we have there is the walking trail. Could you tell us about the walking trail?
Yes, that was one of the things that we wanted for the, not only for the community, but for our children too, to have a walking trail that was in a safe environment where they could exercise. And it has, it's really been a blessing for us there, along with the swimming pool that the city has helped us renovate a few years ago.
Okay, Mr. Vice President.
The next one.
Any further discussion? Are not all in favor?
Aye. Resolution 46367, name the walking trail in Taylor Park, the Reverend Tony Allgood Walking Trail.
I would like the members of Odell and the inner-city mission to come down here with me, please. Reverend Allgood, the walking trail we had established a couple of years ago, I was trying to figure out who was, you know, is worthy, you know, for the walking trail to be named after. Ever since I have been in the community, you have been a strong advocate for the seniors and also for the children in the Odell community. You, I mean, you put a lot into that community, and I do appreciate it. So many times that you do good work, people do good work in the city and throughout the country, and they never be recognized, no one really turn around and say, "Thank you." But I'm here to say today, thank you so much on behalf of the Odell community and really the City of Mobile, because you really don't have to do it, but you stand up and you fight for what you believe in, and what you do believe in is right. So I find fitting to name this walking trail after you. It was my plan to reveal the sign on this coming Saturday at the Easter egg hunt, but the machine is down. But as soon as the machine is up, there will be a sign placed at the walking trail named Reverend Tony Allgood Walking Trail. And let me this resolution before the council vote, and say, whereas the Reverend Tony H. Allgood has dedicated himself to serving the disfranchised, poor, vulnerable communities across our city through both his work and ministries. And whereas, as the director of the Mobile Inner-City Mission, Reverend Allgood has touched the lives of countless citizens. The organization has played an instrumental role in the community with programs for our homeless, neighbors, seniors, and young people, which provide the resources to succeed inside and out the classroom. And whereas, he has served for many years as the Mobile Bar Association Bono Program Director and as an attorney, especially for those in undeserved communities. And whereas, as a leader in an organized labor movement, he has fought tirelessly representing our working men and women, including those working in the porch process of marine and shipbuilding and education industries. And whereas Reverend Allgood, after graduating from the Millsap College in Jackson, Mississippi, went on to study at Spring Hill College here in Mobile before completing the law school at Jones School of Law in Montgomery, and continued to pursue his studies at the Millsap College. And whereas, the Reverend Allgood and his wife Sharon are the proud parents of two daughters, Jean and Rachel, and son Eric, and granddaughter Cecilia. Now, therefore, being resolved by the City Council of the City of Mobile, Alabama, that the walking trail at Taylor Park be named after Reverend Tony Allgood in honor of his dedicated service to the citizens of Mobile, done at the City of Mobile, Alabama, this 16th day of April 2019. CJ Small, Councilmember District 3.
We need a, we need a motion in a second.
So move.
Second.
Prop motion to second in the discussion. Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
None.
Let's come and take a picture, man. Mr. Mayor, we'll take a picture with the council.
Yeah, CJ, just you gave the, I mean, the resolution. Appeals, we have requests for waiver of the noise ordinance on May 25th on Donald Street and June 1st on Dolphin Street.
So move.
Second.
Prop motion to second in the discussion. Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Public hearings today is a public hearing to determine if the structures at 703 Euclid Avenue, 730 Bankhead Place, 614 Molcock Street, 1004 Alba Street, 1611 Duval Street, and 1561 Green Lawn Drive are public nuisances and ordering them demolished.
Is anyone here that would like to speak in the comments? Relative to the houses, our City Clerk is named in the public hearings. If not?
Sir? Do we have Mr. Dwight Anderson? Yes, could you come to the podium, please? Mr. Anderson was appeared on the agenda for April 2nd. And he drives trucks, trucks out of town. And when he got back and saw that he supposed to have been out here regarding some piece of property that he owned, he called me. And, Mr. Anderson, state your name and your address.
Okay, my name's Dwight Anderson, and I live at 6520 Chambers Drive, Mobile. And I bought a piece of property on Bates Lane in the Tomerville area. I grew up in that area, and the house, like, been vacant for years. And so, you know, it's always, you know, been my dream of just helping out the community. So far, what I had planned to do was, I have good credit, so I was planning on just demolishing the house and putting a new one there at the time. And snag had come up, two of them had bought the property, and it had like a pelt, lean on it, or, you know, the person that died bought it from the lady, the Stabs, and...
Mr. Anderson, the gentleman that can help you with that, Mr. David Dockingbach, he's right back here. I would like for you to go up there with him, and he'll help you with that. I want you to come down here so you can get with him. That's the man right up there.
Is his property one of these that's on?
No, no, no. No.
Thank you all.
Yes, sir, thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else that would like to participate, have anything to say relative to these public hearings? If not, public hearings are closed.
Timothy Hollis.
Timothy Hollis, 1924 Seal Street, Mobile, Alabama, 36617. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's been a long time since I seen you all. Good to see you. Just coming, not starting any trouble, trying to get anybody upset or in their feelings. But as you all know, we are, I am the District 1 Citizens Advisory Group member for Park and Recreation. Councilman Richardson placed me there. I've been there for two terms now. I'd like to see us have some meetings on that behalf.
We got the new director here.
Okay.
In the house.
All right, great, great, great. Cousins Court, a lot of money was spent on it, a lot of money. And I have the bid with me in the car, and I have the exact diagram of exactly how the court was supposed to have been built, how it should have been opened. And a court that cost as much as, as Cousins Court should have been, been opened perfectly on day one. Court was open, the lights were not affixed. It probably was another month later when the lights were affixed. I'd probably say that was October when the lights were placed up. Here it is halfway through April, almost May, we're on spring break, and the lights yet remain to be able to be turned on. Now, I understand that the power does work in the lights, because people are able to charge their phones while they're out there. I also understand that there's power in the lights, because the security cameras that are on there, they actually rotate and work well. The only issue is, is there's lock on the box, and the lock has been there.
parks in the, in the city of Mobile?
Uh, sure, Mr. Smith.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So to respond to your question regarding figures and Sage have the same setup, it's a push button. And so are you saying that's locked?
It doesn't work.
So the way the lights are supposed to be set up is that they do not come on at dark. You push a button and they stay open, stay on for two hours. So when two hours is up, the lights go off, you have to push the button again. So I will follow up on that today. And Tremere, this is my first time hearing of that and I will follow up on that. And I know we have a meeting, um, Mr. Small to go out, out Tremere Park. And so I'm, I will investigate. I know we work with the schools and so the school have the access to the, um, being able to turn on and off the lights so when they're doing their practice and their programming. And so I'll research that as well.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Richardson?
I would just like to say, um, Mr. Hollis was right when he said that, uh, the court was completed before the lights were installed. Because Mr. Cuthbert didn't pay for the lights, he paid for the court. I insisted that we have the same lights at figures of we have for Sage. So we had to go back, get the money to put the lights in. But now on cutting the lights on and off does, I think, we just heard from Ms. Smith, she got the answer for that. But, but the reason they didn't, they were not completed both at the same time because he didn't give us any money for lights. But we got lights. And what I can hear from Ms. Smith, the lights will be, is coming on.
of Mobile, good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
Good morning.
Reggie Hill, 1007 Center Street.
Mayor City Clerk?
Reggie Hill.
I rise today to, uh, offer my comments regarding the public safety committee meeting.
Reggie Hill.
Before I do so, I would like to, uh, commend Pastor Allgood on that recognition for today. He's been a true advocate in the community of doing those solutions that can be proactive, uh, to prevent these situations that we come to. I'm very proud to call him my friend and I'm glad to see him recognized in that manner. Also wanna recognize another young man who's been in the community very, uh, vigorously to work towards making changes and actually doing things that are worth doing to actually create these solutions. And this young man is Tyler Spencer, he's a senior at Murphy's, getting ready to graduate and, uh, attend the school that the city clerk, uh, attended Southern University. He'll be out, be out doing for the Human Jukebox Band this, this week.
Smart fellow.
Yes, indeed. So we're gonna work on that as well. But he's the maestro of mucabafas, president. The musical term for maestro is, you know, the director. So he's the president, he's been an advocate for this as well. So today, um, much like my friend, uh, from District One, is not necessarily to be a, a bearer of bad news today because we've already done the research on all of this stuff. Um, the gentleman from District Five even commented in the pre-council meeting last week about things that we already know as to why this stuff is happening. We understand it, we've seen the studies, things have been going on for decades, this is not, however, what we have not done and what I've seen to be the, the issue is we haven't put the solutions on the table to actually resolve the problem. So how are we gonna do that? That becomes the question. Because, because when we put that question out there, now it's not only what you feel personally, you have so many things that you're invested in in these positions of power that you have to be considered of. That's a very sensitive matter. I get it. But who else other than this city can say that they're the first in this state? Who else? Who else other than people in this city can say the oldest standing city hall in the country is footsteps away from here? Who else? So when we're going out looking for other solutions beyond right here, we're already messing up. The only way that you can, uh, fail at something is not trying. So by us not trying to get something done collectively in a manner that we already know how to do, we've already failed. Doesn't matter how many committee meetings we have, how many resources we put behind something, how many new projects we create, we have to have something that is in place in the trenches daily, already understanding and navigating through the issues that we see on a regular basis. All these emails, excessive calls that you get, conversations that you get stopping in places where you just, you're just a common citizen like the rest of us with issues that we really could, could solutions to the table for. And I can come over here and complain about some serious public safety stuff that I deal with in the city myself, but that would not create a solution. I would still be putting myself before what needs to happen for the collective. So until we start looking at what's gonna happen for all people, until we start putting people at the table who actually do this for a living, daily, it's not gonna matter, matters. You all were elected because people believe in your abilities, more than one time, because people believe in your abilities. So I believe that we're also understanding that you have to have some type of rationale, some ability to listen, because that's more than just one type of person or group of people that are in your district. Now, there's been some riff and raft between, between administration and legislative body, but those same, same people that put you in those seats, they're the people that put them there too. So we have to be able to work collectively regardless of that kinda stuff. And so the last thing I'll say, and I'll, um, wrap this up, is I've submitted stuff to this body for probably about three years. Three years, concrete information, specific data, metrics, valuations, how we can do it. But because of public safety matters that are even beyond what we just bring to the forefront here, we prevent our city from moving forward. I will never in my life put that at the forefront of what I speak about, 'cause I'm strong enough to do it. But there's so many vulnerable people out here who need voices and advocates to get stuff done. And if we really wanna see changes in Mobile, we need to work with those people who are willing to do it. I thank you for your time, um, for entertaining my comments. And as I always say, I'm very optimistic, you have the plans in front of you, I would love to actually sit down and meet with you about them and so we can get something done. Thank you so much.
Mr. Hill?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Ms. Gregory and then Mr. Davis.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and thank you, Mr. Hill, for coming. Um, you can take your seat, I'm not gonna ask you any questions.
Okay. Did you have any questions for Mr. Davis? Or was it a comment?
Do you have any questions?
Thank you all.
Um, thank you for coming and for, uh, bringing more information as you always do. Uh, I do have a couple of things and I'm glad that Ms. Smith is here. You may or may not be aware, and Reggie, I know you've met Ms. Smith before since she has started here with the City of Mobile, but there is something that I think you'll be interested in and it is the Parks and Recreation Program Partnership that, that they're beginning to offer. Um, it is a program where we're looking for individuals and organizations to do programs. So what I was thinking, and I've made a copy of it to give you in case you don't have it already, and of course Shonda's here, she can explain it too, but, um, I'm thinking that this would be a great opportunity for you and a place for you to do your programs. In my district, I, there is one recreation center on my side of town. Now Bess has the Connie Hudsonson Senior Center, but the only other recreation center in West Mobile is in Hillsdale. And I count that as a hub for many communities in West Mobile. So they will be taking applications from organizations like yours, uh, from people like you who are interested in doing good things in the community to make our community a safer and better place to live. There will be a panel set up to vet all of these different organizations, um, and then the place that they will be done will be our rec center. So people know that these are safe, clean, um, facilities, there's plenty of good parking, well-lit parking. And, and I think having it at a senior, at a senior, at a recreation center that the city owns provides that level of, um, I guess wellbeing for people, they know it is a good place and everything is vetted and will work the way they, they will work. Um, it will be a program not just for District Seven, obviously, it's for citywide. And I think that that would be a great location for you to work in my district. And I agree with you, we, we need these types of programs in our city and I think that's a perfect way to do it. And having a panel to vet all of the different organizations that come through will provide the kind of, um, um, incentive for people to take advantage of those specific programs. So I do wanna thank Shonda and her department for coming on board and putting this together so quickly. She has a big job ahead of her, but she has really taken the bull by the horns, I'm very impressed with what she's doing. And I know she is ready to, uh, reach out to different organizations to, um, provide them with this information and help them all be successful. So she's sitting right there and I know she's ready to, to talk with you. I mentioned, we had a discussion yesterday and I mentioned you to her, so she knows to, to expone call. And then again, I do have the papers in front of me if you want that. Take advantage of what the city has and I think that will be a really good partnership.
Uh, Mr. Davis?
I don't have any.
Uh, any, anyone else? Thank you, thank you, Mr. Hill. And, and I certainly hold, I, I certainly agree with, uh, Councilor Gregory, that the information that's being requested by Parks and Rec is exactly what you've been asking for, for about three years. And so I hope, I'm hopeful that you will take, uh, advantage of that opportunity to partner with Parks and Rec and hopefully something can be solidified. And, and thank you, Ms. Smith, for being here today. Mayor City Clerk?
David Preston.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. My name is David Preston, I live at 4161 Winchester Drive in District Four. And like the mayor, I have already booked my tickets for, uh, to Chicago and back for the first of July.
Alright, that's the way to do it.
But I rise today to talk about the discussion that the community is having about gun violence and more specifically about stolen weapons from unlocked vehicles. I appreciate the discussion that we're having in, as a community. I've been intricately involved in this discussion for all, for over a year now, when I, uh, participated in a discussion group led by AL.com and, uh, out of Washington DC. And I've been, ever since I heard the police chief Batiste on the radio say that the number one source of, of stolen, of weapon, illegal weapons on our streets is stolen weapons from unlocked vehicles, it's been a concern for me. Uh, I'm sure we'll continue to have discussions about a multitude of ways, solutions to solve this problem, including ones that I'll be, uh, interested in, uh, working on, like workforce development, can people that need jobs with the jobs that are available in the community through public transportation and making sure that people with jobs target the communities with, with unemployment. Like Walmart, for example, is paying, uh, experienced truck drivers up to $85,000 a year because they can't hire enough truck drivers. We have Bishop State that teach, uh, teaches truck drivers, teaches people how to drive trucks. We should work to get those two people together to see if they can come up with a program to provide a, provide a job for people when they graduate that program at Bishop State. But also, one thing that I think that this council could consider doing is passing an ordinance, making it a misdemeanor to not report stolen property. Not to victimize the, uh, or not to criminalize the victim, as has been said in the past, but punishable by a fine. And the reason why, why this would be a good idea is because it would provide the police department and the administration with good reliable data because most law-abiding citizens follow the law because it's the law. Also, the NRA recommends gun owners that have their weapons stolen, report it to the police. So you, uh, and the reason for that is, is if we can get good reliable data about where guns are being stolen from unlocked vehicles and when they're being stolen, we can take a macro and a micro approach, uh, to the, to all of the problem. Like for example, if we had this law in place and then the data shows us that neighborhoods in Tillman's Corner, for example, is most likely, uh, to be burglarized on Thursday evenings, the police can step up their patrols in Tillman's Corner on Thursday evenings to help catch people that are stealing these guns. Also, if we, if at a micro level, if we see a particular gun owner is having multiple weapons stolen from multiple unlocked vehicles and not reporting it to the police, well now the, uh, city prosecutors and the police have a tool in their weapon if that ordinance was to pass to, you know, come down, I mean, I, I mind, but come down on that particular homeowner to work with them, to, to help them, to remind them that it's for their safety and the safety of their neighbors, to lock their vehicles up and secure their weapons. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bush.
Sylvia Reed?
What's she here to speak on?
Oh, I'm sorry, regarding, um, the gun issue.
Good morning. Thank you all so much for allowing me to come before you this morning. Uh, I've been hearing so much from the gun issue.
Mr. Reed, if you could give us your address.
Oh, I'm sorry, my name's Sylvia Reed and I live at 1783 Princetonwood Drive West, Mobile, Alabama. Uh, this councilwoman Gregory is the lady of the district over there. But anyway, I've been hearing so much on gun, uh, issues and gun control and I really have been considering, uh, being a gun, uh, person that, uh, gun owner. Due to the fact that I have felt so many criminal attacks on my life since I've been here. But my question is, how can I become that, uh, responsible gun, uh, person, uh, with the gun under my control as a responsibility to keep it safe? When I have, have found that I have had so many kinds of, uh, intruders into my car, which I have reported and nothing has been done. If I have an important document in my car, I come back, no ma- I've parked my cars in several places in this, uh, community and someone had went in there, they did not, reason why I know that keys are being issued somewhere else. They did not, uh, um, do any destruction to my car, they just removed objects that of importance from me, on me car. I've experienced that over and over. So how can, and I'll listen at the issue too of, uh, holding the owner responsible and saying that they leave the car unlocked. I cannot even, first of all, get past, how can I become a gun owner and become a responsible gun owner if I'm experiencing someone going in and out of my car, locking it back but getting that item out there of importance out there, paperwork mostly. Uh, so, and then saying that the gun owner is the responsible person. But what I'm saying is this, the issue of so many, uh, car people that can unlock cars too, how could I be, if I purchased this gun, which I feel like is probably I needed now, because I've been sexually assaulted, raped, since I've been in and out this community?
How long have you been?
So how can I become a responsible gun owner when I'm experiencing somebody going into my car, getting anything of great importance to cover their tracks? So, I'm trying to, first of all, grasp, how can I get a gun and protect myself? And if it be come up missing out of my car, how can you say that I'm responsible? When I went to the police over and over, no one have not helped themselves accountable for this action, not even the rapists that, uh, the sexual assault in this town. I'm trying to figure this thing out. And I keep hearing saying to unlock cars, unlock cars, somebody acting, unlocking, and you got locksmiths everywhere, access to everything, nothing is private. I learned that in this town, which I love, it's a lot of good people here, but it's a lot of, lot of craziness, they are.
Yes, it is.
So, but I'm trying to now wanna protect Sylvia since the law have not protected me. I wanna protect me. How can I become a responsible gun owner? And if my gun come up missing in my car, that I won't get, the law, the law get me for it? This is my court this morning. I've had a nephew kid kill a gun. So tell me, how do a citizen like me be that person that y'all keep saying, okay, somebody unlocking the car? Yes, I'm experiencing somebody locking my car, unlocking. If I go get a paper, a grape bag and put in my car, I come back out, I get Walmart, I could be out here in front of this police station, it's gone. So I want you all to give me an answer, you don't have to answer it all.
Yes, ma'am.
But I want some- So how can I become a responsible gun owner when I'm experiencing somebody going into my car, getting anything of great importance to cover their tracks? So I'm trying to, first of all, grasp, how can I get a gun and protect myself? And if it be come up missing out of my car, how can you say that I'm responsible? When I went to the police over and over, no one have not helped themselves accountable for this action, not even the rapists that are the sexual assault in this town? I'm trying to figure this thing out. And I keep hearing saying, unlock cars. Unlock cars? Somebody actually unlocking? And you got locksmiths everywhere, access to everything. Nothing is private. I learned that in this town, which I love. There's a lot of good people here, but it's a lot of craziness.
Yes, it is.
So, but I'm trying to now want to protect Sylvia since the law have not protected me. I want to protect me. How can I become a responsible gun owner? And if my gun come up missing in my car, that I won't get, the law get me for it? This is my question this morning. I've had a nephew keep killing a gun. So tell me, how do a citizen like me be that person that y'all keep saying, okay, somebody unlocking the car? Yes, I'm experiencing somebody locking my car, unlocking. If I go get a paper, a grape bag, and put it in my car, I come back out, I can be at Walmart, I could be out here in front of this police station, it's gone.
Well, uh.
So I want you all to give me an answer. You don't have to answer it all.
Yes, ma'am.
But I want some answers in this town, because by now, like I say, I have experienced several attempts of criminal activities against me. I want some answers. And so you can hold it, come up with some answers. I'm gonna keep calling the police.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much for your time.
Uh, thank you for coming down today, and we will provide your name and your contact information to the Public Safety Director, so that he or his, whoever he would want to appoint can directly address the issues that you've brought to our attention.
I want to say this one more thing. I think that Director was not.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Well, we're gonna put you in touch with him, so that hopefully he or whoever he feels would be best suited can contact you and work with you on these issues.
Ms. Ham?
Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to propose one solution for her. It seems to me what she's complaining about is that people, unbeknownst to her, are coming in and out of her car. And they're not breaking in. They just go in there, removing things. I'll suggest that you go by Walmart. $50 for a camera, it's not, no bigger than my thumb, for a camera. That's no bigger than my thumb. You can, you can, you can put it on motion, otherwise it's not gonna do nothing until somebody moves. And you can put it, you can put it on a glass, you can put it somewhere in your car, unbeknownst to anybody. And if anybody come and move, it's gonna film everything they do. It's no more than $50.
Not this car, but I'm talking about.
I'm so sorry. I'm sorry. That was Councilman Richardson's recommendation to you.
Right, that's all the laws.
I'm gonna throw one quick recommendation out, too. The aisle over from that camera is a safe. For about $29, you get you a safe and all those important documents, you need to take them in the house. Don't leave them in the car for the people to get. Take your important doc, doc in the house, put them in a safe. How important they be if you leaving them right there for somebody, anybody, you know they coming? Take your important documents in the house so folks can't bother your stuff. That's just a little food for thought, but thank you for coming down today.
Amen.
Uh, Ma'am City Clerk?
Ordinance is held over 88010, ordinance deeming vacant property on Durand Drive, not now needed for public or municipal purposes in authorizing the sale.
Move to table.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
No.
If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item is late.
63012, amend chapter 63 of the Mobile City Code pertaining to rates for record service.
Move to layover till May 7.
Second.
Probably motion is second and a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item is laid over.
64017, rezone property at 3881 Moffett Road from R1, B2, and B3 to B3.
So move. Second.
Probably motion is second and a discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
Consent resolutions held over 6297, urge legislative delegation to adopt regulations permit Class II municipalities to adopt reasonable regulations to prevent the theft of firearms, arms from unlocked vehicles.
Ma'am, Mr. Vice President?
Yes, sir.
I have an amendment to offer. The amendment would be to leave all of the, whereas is the same, and when we get down to the resolution itself, change the language so that it would now read, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Mobile, Alabama, that the local legislative delegation is requested to speedily enact House Bill 375, which is, which is the bill which would make possession of stolen guns a Class II felony, and House Bill 282, which is the bill asking for a constitutional amendment respecting bail in criminal cases. In any event, to speedily enact House Bill 375 and 282, and urge to prepare and support legislation that would permit Class II municipalities to adopt reasonable regulations to prevent the theft of firearms from unlocked vehicles.
Mr. President, I need a motion and a second on the original first.
Yeah, so move.
There's been motion and a second. That's on the original motion, and then Mr. Hayes is.
So man, and I want to second the amendment motion.
I thought I had done that. Any discussion on the amendment?
No.
Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So let's vote on the motion as amended. Maybe discussion first. Any discussion?
I have a motion.
Listen.
I think John may have something to say.
I don't, I don't, I just didn't want to. Get that off, Tim. Yes, sir. Appreciate you.
Need a motion to adopt the resolution as amended?
I believe we adopt the resolution as amended.
Second.
Probably motion is a second and a discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The amendment, motion is passed. Right. Resolved. Resolution is passed. And we want to commend Councilman Small, who is really working.
Amen.
Amen.
Hard on this issue, feels passionately about it, as we all do. And, you know, we see on the news each night, these different occurrences that occur primarily in our communities, and there's a certain feeling of helplessness. This is one way that we can have some impact, and I'm most confident that we'll have impact when I appreciate his leadership in this regard.
Mr. Vice President?
Mr. Richardson?
I said it, I don't think the Councilman Small is off the mark in his proposal. You can leave home with a child, let's say a two-year-old child. If you don't have that child strapped into a special seat, the police can give you tickets. But you can leave your gun on the seat. The child can't hurt nobody. The gun can. You can leave your gun on the seat and go on, and nobody gonna do nothing. But you, you don't strap that, if you, if you're gonna handle pesticide, you have to have license to do that. And you have to keep it under control. You can't leave your pesticide out where nobody can get to it, if they come back and get you. For next, you can't leave it out where somebody can drink it or eat it or whatever. You must keep it under protective care at all time. And here we come with a big old dangerous gun. Well, just sit there and go and leave it on his seat, this damn gun, you know, we got the right to bear arm. I think it's time to do something. I don't know what it is, but in this city, with the amount of, with the growing rate of gun violence, I think we gonna have to do something. And I commend Councilman Small for trying to do something. And I hope when we send this up to the legislature, our legislators will grab it and do what we're asking them to. Thank you.
Mr. Vice President?
Mr. Small?
For the public to be aware, exactly what we vote on, I'd like to ask our attorney if you just sum up exactly what the council had just voted on. Please.
The council has just approved a resolution urging the local legislative delegation to support two bills that are currently before the legislature. One, which would make possessing a firearm, a stolen firearm, a Class C felony. The other would support a constitutional amendment authorizing judges to deny bail to certain violent offenders. In connection with that, the resolution also is asking the local legislative delegation to give the city council the authority to pursue local remedies in response to the local problem.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I'd like to, you know, thank the colleagues, my colleagues, for the support of this resolution that is, you know, before us. We have been grappling with finding solutions that will penalize gun owners, but in the meantime, we have, you know, good people that are being shot and losing their lives. You know, I'm not interested in penalizing or victimizing, you know, gun owners, but I do think that we need to held them with some type of responsibility. After all, you know, their irresponsibility in gun ownership is leading innocent lives to the graveyard and to the hospital. You know, last week I had mentioned about, you know, enforcing, you know, a particular law, and I forever say, you know, CJ, you know, and that this law is already on the books, which is reckless endangerment, you know? And I believe that if it's evidenced by the police department and the enforcement support about administration, perhaps, perhaps this epidemic of stolen guns will decrease, and lives will be saved, and people are able to walk about in their homes. And to me, it's all about how you interpret reckless endangerment. Many people can interpret, you know, many things different, you know, but again, it's all about how you interpret, you know, how asking requests on behalf of countless innocent lives, that the administration required the police to enforce this law in the situation where innocent lives are lost, just because they're going on and left there up in an automobile unsecured. And I also ask, you know, if possible, if they still, you know, administration has some wheels about this, you know, even trying to get a general, Attorney General opinion on this. If, but one life is saved, that's a result. We have prevented hearts from, you know, breaking, and perhaps a gun owner would think twice before they leave a weapon in an unsecure car. For months, we have, you know, sit here and grieving, shed bloods of police officers and innocent bystanders have lost their lives because of a criminal, criminal who has stolen a gun from a well-meaning gun owner on automobiles. You know, several times I get calls, you know, throughout the weeks and the months about gunshots that have just been fired, you know, throughout, you know, district, my district. You know, for instance, I have 1010 Baltimore Street, which is the housing project right next to Taylor Park. I have a lady that's in a hospital bed, literally have to get on the floor because of gunshots that is being fired at 1010 Baltimore Street. I don't believe that these guns are being brought by responsible people. I really believe that these guns that have been shot are from guns that have been stolen. You know, I have people that's on the south end of DIP. They're uncomfortable in leaving their homes. They do not go out their homes at certain times of night, you know, and they can't afford to even move because they're on fixed incomes. And whatever that we can do within our power, I believe that we can do. These senseless shooters using stolen guns have crippled our city to epidemic status. You know, last week, Mobile was on first 48 hours. It was real embarrassing that a national radio talk show had emphasized that Mobile, Alabama is on first 48 hours. You know, the bloods and the tears of loved ones are heavy on my heart, and I know it's also heavy on my colleagues' heart. So whatever we can do to make sure that we don't, this epidemic will just keep on rising and rising, I believe that we should do. You know, someone stated about, you know, you know, endangerment, but also we need to, you know, look at the Alabama 13A-11-61.33, see what the code, that state law also states, not to get, you know, into it. And I understand that we have the Second Amendment, you know, in the United States, but there are 11 states have laws concerning firearms, from California to Massachusetts to Connecticut. And we have several states right now, such as New York and other states, are weighing in the issue, weighing, you know, of gun laws. If those states can do it, why can't Alabama do it? Is it because we just don't want to? Or is it just status quo? You know, Memphis, Tennessee has a prime example of how they are, you know, you know, fighting this issue with gun laws. That's to what other states are doing. Let's look into what other cities are doing. Again, AL.com reported that there was an annual cost, an annual cost of gun violence is $4.9 billion. $4.9 billion of gun violence. We need to do something. And we are asking now for the state to give the city some type of leeway, a door, for we can do something, for we can save lives and make sure that our tomorrow is brighter. And again, I do thank colleagues.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Wood?
On behalf of the administration, I want to commend Councilman Small and the City Council for taking a proactive step to give us the tools we don't already have to fight gun violence. To the extent that we're asking that the two legislative endeavors that are already in place, one, to stop the revolving door with gun violence, and two, to make sure that it is a felony to possess a stolen gun, those, of course, it's a suggestion in the behest of Director Barber, I think those are fantastic ways to move forward and to ask for more tools, and not to justify those tools. I think what was mentioned earlier, we talked about reckless endangerment, but Small mentioned asking the Attorney General's Office for an opinion. I think that's an excellent idea to do so. But right now, there's still a practical prohibition against us being able to have our prosecutors do so, but I don't think there's any harm in asking for the tools that this body needs to be able to proactively fight gun violence. The blame should be squarely based on the criminals. I know the council's doing everything that they can to fight gun violence. The administration's doing the same thing, and as I said, the police department is actively doing every legal means to do so, and to get an Attorney General's opinion, probably be a good idea. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Wood?
In pre-council, I tried to clarify, and I'm not gonna go long, but I don't want people to think that my yeah, yeah vote on this is a vote for gun laws. I'd rather think of it as a requirement, and it may be, it may be an eventual requirement to report the loss of a weapon of any kind. It's about being responsible. It's not about us trying to get the ability to tell a gun owner if they can have a gun or not, or how they must carry that gun. Those laws are all in place. This, in my opinion, I mean, what I foresee is an opportunity possibly in the future to discuss and maybe implement a reporting requirement. And that in itself, the not reporting that your weapon was stolen, would be irresponsible, and there ought to be some, some action to make sure that doesn't happen again. I don't know what the words will be, but I, I hope that the future doesn't ever get to a level where we're telling people how to carry guns and when they can carry them. Those laws are already in place, and I think are sufficient. But we've got to know when, when weapons are stolen, so that MPD can do their job. Couple that with Chip Brown's, Representative Chip Brown's granting, so to speak, to judges to be able to keep people in jail, and further Simpson's bill to allow, or to rather, make it a felony to possess a stolen gun. All these things together, along with people simply being responsible, when things don't work out the way they planned, report it. That's it. Just report it. Thank you.
Thirty-seven, three, four, three, recommended approval to the AB4 for issuance of a manufacturer license for Old Majestic Bruin on St. Louis Street.
Second. Probably motion is second and a discussion? If not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Resolutions held over. If there are no objections, I'll take all of these together. Twenty-one, three, five, three, authorized contract with Cruise and Port Advisors to provide consulting services regarding the cruise ship industry. Twenty-one, three, five, four, authorized contract with Train USA for DDC control system inspection and preventative maintenance at the West Regional Public Library and the Ben May Main Library. Twenty-one, three, five, six, authorized contract with McCrory and Williams for 2018 pay-go.
So move.
Second.
Second. Probably motion is second and a discussion?
Yes. I would just like to brief comment on twenty-one, three, five, three, which is the cruise terminal and passenger retention, and I guess enhancement of passenger service with our cruise terminal. At today's pre-conference, I Um, at today's pre-conference, I learned that this funding source will come from the terminals, um, um, resources, meaning the parking garage, which not only pays for itself, but so far has been paying for any, any improvements that we do at the terminal and, and the, in, in the garage. So that's a good thing. And, um, having this professional coming out of the same resources, um, I am in support of. But I did get a lot of questions when this first was announced in the community and I would just like to say why I'm voting for this on behalf of the residents in District Six, because it is an enterprise account, more or less, where the funds are coming from the same resource and going back in to encourage additional resources. So again, I am supportive of this and just wanted to clarify my position. Thank you.
You have further comments?
Um, Ms. Chair, if I might, on twenty-one, three, fifty-six, which, which is authorizing the contract with McCrory and Williams for the pay-as-you-go project, and this is in my district. I do want to thank Commissioner Connie Hudson for, um, her help in making this a possibility. Commissioner Hudson is always wonderful to work with and very generous in her pay-as-you-go funds for the district. So again, many thanks to her. This project is one that will improve this particular intersection in my district. It is a very heavily trafficked corridor there on Spring Hill Avenue and Old Shell, I mean, um, McGregor. Um, what we are doing is putting in some new traffic arms and narrowing the, um, intersection itself, which will help with the traffic flow. This, this is one that is right next to where some new retail tailing up. The fire station right there at Museum and, um, McGregor will be demolished and a new one will go up and take its place. This is also the gateway to the, uh, Mobile Museum of Art and Langdon Park there. So it's a very special intersection and again, very well-traveled and it really needs a lot of work to, um, be the kind of intersection that we need in order to keep traffic moving and also to, uh, provide a much better aesthetic for all of these other new things that are going on right along that area. And once we get Ziegler widened and finished off, uh, the whole area from Schillinger Road, uh, down to the interstate will be four-laned and newly resurfaced sidewalks, bike lanes, you name it, all in District Seven. Just thought I would throw that in.
Mr. Vice President, if I could, if I could piggyback on Ms. Gregory's comments, um, there, there are, uh, earlier yesterday, uh, McGregor Avenue, uh, between Dolphin Street and Old Shell Road was closed to through traffic. It's only open, um, to local traffic. Uh, this is being done in order to complete the installation of sidewalks, curb and gutter on the west side of the street. Uh, this is phase two of a three-phase product, product, project for that section of McGregor. Uh, the phase one was the installation of sidewalk, curb and gutter on the east side. Phase three will be, uh, the repaving of that section road, uh, when, when the sidewalks and gutter are, uh, completed on the west side. Ms. Gregory just spoke about, uh, similar improvements that are going to be made to McGregor Avenue between, uh, Old Shell Road and Spring Hill Avenue and, uh, the long-awaited, uh, project in which we've, uh, got some federal money and our ALDOT partners to widen, uh, McGregor Avenue between Dolphin Street and Airport Boulevard is still on the books. Uh, that is a major rebuild that's, uh, which will include sidewalks, curb, gutter, wide street, uh, taken down and replacing the bridge at the bottom road, changing that, the entire road between, uh, Pine Brook and the, and the shopping center across the street. Uh, I could go on and on and on, but it's a major project and, uh, we've been waiting a long time for it. Uh, it's still several years off, uh, but we've, uh, begun work on the right-of-way acquisition. There's, there's not that much to be done, but it's going to take a while to get that done. But the bottom line is when all this work is done, McGregor, which is a very heavily-traveled thoroughfare, will, uh, be uniformed from Spring Hill Avenue all the way down to Airport Boulevard, have sidewalks, curb, gutter be repaved. It's, it's really a major project and I'm glad we're able to approach it, uh, using C I P federal and pay-as-you-go dollars. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Davis, um, any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye. Opposed? Item passes.
Consent resolution is being introduced for the first time, zero-three, three, five, eight through sixty-three, three, eight, nine.
Motion to suspend the rules for media consideration of resolution oh-three, three, five, eight through six-oh, three, eight, nine.
Second. Motion in second and in discussion? If not, all in, all in, aye opposed?
Zero, zero, three, five, eight, appoint Teresa Testner to the Mobile Tree Commission. Zero, eight, three, five, nine, approve requisitions over seventy-five hundred for the week of April the eighth. Thirty-seven, three, sixty, recommend approval to the A B C Board for issuance of a lounge retail liquor class-one license for Bubble Lounge on Oshel Road. Forty, three, six, one, three, six, two, three, six, three, 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 four, three, six, five, three, six, six, are, um, declaring structures, public nuisances and ordering them demolished. Sixty, three, six, eight, approve order of special bonus to Officer of the Month Tiffany Monty. Sixty, three, six, nine, determine expenditure of discretionary funds for the Sugar Creek Homeowners Association serves a public purpose and approved payment. Sixty, three, seven, zero, nominate the following for consideration as members of the Mobile County Board of Equalization, Dr. Arnold Luderman, Kurt Mette, and Dr. Milton E. Saffo. Sixty, three, eight, nine, oppose Senate Bill two-six-four relating to the management and control of local rights of way.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second and in discussion?
If I could just briefly talk about the, um, Senate Bill two-sixty-four, which is sixty-dash-three, eighty-nine, our resolution. I thank the council for, um, signing on to this and letting our legislators know that regulating the five G, which is the next level of wireless service, this council has already had committee meetings with the industry to talk about how, um, that resource could be placed in our community that's aesthetically pleasing and it works with what people expect, especially in residential corridors. And so, um, the State House has decided that they were going to knock out cities having any kind of authority over these rights of way, which belong to the general public. There is a franchise fee that's normally paid when an industry uses the public rights of way. We would be, uh, prohibited from also having agreements, franchise agreements. And again, this is an overreach by the State House and I do hope our legislators, um, allow cities and particularly the city that we rest in to have, have say about this, uh, up-and-coming industry placement for, for state and safety purposes and all the reasons. You have rights of way that the city is supposed to be very, very proud of and it's a resource that belongs to the entire community. Thank you.
Can I jump on that just a little bit, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Wade.
Uh, my message to the, to the state legislators that I've talked to is simple. They don't want the federal government messing with their stuff and we don't want them messing with ours.
Right.
The municipality should remain sovereign and, and especially those that are vibrant important to the state. Um, and we need to be able to act quickly to address our issues that are unique to our part of the state and, um, I just hope that they will listen in, in enough numbers to, um, stop this preemptive campaign. Thank you.
If I could, and I've spoken more than I usually do at this meeting.
That's okay.
Um, but I, I want to, I want to jump on something Mr. Williams said, which is here in southwest Alabama, we, we're different from the rest of the state. Now, I've lived all over the state of Alabama. I've lived in Mobile, I've lived in Birmingham, I've lived in Huntsville twice, I've lived in Dothan, I've lived in Montgomery. And I can tell you, each one of those cities is different. There's no one better than the other. They're all great places to live, but they're each one different, different concerns, different ways of approaching things. We got a state that is, that is eight-hundred-and-sixty miles long if you travel on it on I-65. That's a long way. We got mountains in the north, we got beaches in the south, we got farmland, we got big cities, we got all different kinds of things going on in this state. The cities are different and they need the ability to address their own concerns and not have a cookie cutter slam down upon them by the state legislature.
I, I totally agree with you, uh, Councilman Davis. And, uh, I've only lived in the one place, Mobile, Alabama. I think it's a great place and citizens have elected eight individuals to lead the city. We have the ability to lead. We don't need leadership from Montgomery preempting us from being able to do, uh, what needs to happen here in the city of Mobile. And it just seems like this particular section, uh, more so than, than others in the past, it's one issue after another. So I would encourage my colleagues, while we're passing these resolutions and things that'll be disseminated to our legislative delegation, we need to, need to also do what, uh, Councilman Williams and, and, uh, Small does quite often. We need to pick up our phones and we need to call them, particularly the ones that we have relationships with. And if we need to get in our cars and drive and testify in some of these committee meetings as to how it will impact our communities, I think it's well worth, worth it to Montgomery. Uh, if not, we will continue to have our hands tied as relates to how we deal with it in the city of Mobile. Uh, we've already voted.
No.
Nope.
No, we have this discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
C I P resolution is being introduced, zero-one, three, seven, one through twenty-one, three, seven, five.
Motion to suspend the rules for media consideration of resolution zero-one, three, seven, one through twenty-one, three, seven, five.
Is there a motion, is there a motion, is there a second? A proper motion in second and in discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Okay.
Uh, we've got to read them out.
Got to read them out.
Oh, okay. My, my, keep on going, man. I thought that he was in opposition, so I'm shocked. Okay, Madam City Clerk?
Zero-one, three, seven, one, authorized agreement with ALDOT for Airport Boulevard intersection improvement. Twenty-one, three, seven, two, authorized contract with Chris Brewer Contracting for twenty-nineteen, um, citywide annual sidewalk repair and maintenance. Twenty-one, three, seven, three, authorized contract with Lower Alabama Heating and Cooling and Refrigeration for Vault Cooling System Replacement at the Mobile Public Library. Twenty-one, three, seven, four, authorized contract with May Hall Service Group doing business as Surf Pro of South Mobile B O K for environmental remediation at the gymnastics facility at Medal of Honor Park. And twenty-one, three, seven, five, authorized contract with Southern Earth Sciences for Trinity Gardens Area twenty-eighteen street and drainage improvements.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second and in discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes. Uh, the last one, we were twenty-one, three, seven, five, authorized contract with Southern Earth Science for Trinity, for the Trinity Gardens area. It's a drainage improvement contract where one year we, uh, have, we have to do the engineering work and then the next year we actually come out and close the ditches. This contract has to do with closing ditches and the contract, uh, is for closing the ditches on Warsaw, Esso, Harbor, Greenback, and Itchway. It's five streets. So there are two, two that's on each street, on both sides of the street. That's ten. There's two on each street, five streets, that's ten ditches. So we hope to knock out ten more ditches this year. And I expect them to start as soon as possible, but we are making progress.
Any more discussion?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Small and then Ms. Rich?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Vice President. I'd like to, you know, commend, you know, Councilman Richardson. I know he's saying he's been down here seventeen years advocating and it's all because of the C I P, you know? And I'm just excited, you know, for the next coming C I P year with Baltimore Street, you know? The citizens, um, you know, in Oldell Community have been, you know, crying about that street being repaved, which cannot be repaved. I get phone calls every other week about the condition of that, but because of C I P, you know, we getting things done throughout the city of Mobile. And again, I'd like to commend this council for, you know, putting this together and voting on it for we can make our, a difference in our community. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Ms. Rich?
Thank you very much.
And then Mr. Richardson.
I would like to speak to zero-one, three, seven, six, which is in agreement with ALDOT for, uh, synchronization of traffic lights from University to Hillcrest. I thank the Traffic Engineering Department, um, and this is the C I P out of District Six for this budget cycle to match the, um, grant or the, the money from ALDOT, which, um, a lot of people travel along Airport Boulevard. So it's, it's a, a very busy corridor, probably the busiest in our city, no doubt. And, um, to anything that we can do to help commuters, people that are shopping or traveling through our city, indeed, this is a well-received contract and I look forward to its implementation. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yes, sir. I would just like to, um, piggyback on what Councilman Small had to say regarding C I P. Came on this council in nineteen ninety-seven, between nineteen ninety-seven and twenty-fifteen, I didn't have any money in the revenue to spend on any of the projects in District One. So consequently, it wasn't that one dime of, uh, the local taxpayer money spent to recycle the street and not close a ditch, not one. And since we received, uh, C I P in twenty-fifteen, uh, we have pretty much transformed all of these districts because we have funding. And had we not passed the C I P, we would just be talking about what we need. Today, we can do something about it.
Uh, yes, uh, we've had our discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
What are we voting on?
We're on, uh, the C I P items.
C I P, which one of them?
All of them.
Oh, yeah. Uh, uh, then we have a rule on how we do it?
Well, no one raised any objections. We were waiting on you, John. You didn't say nothing.
I'm not raising. You knew that. I mean, I just, uh, I, I thought I had missed it, that we had taken one out of the order we were just talking about.
No.
The rule not going to change there until we, until we establish that. No.
Okay.
Right now, it's still arranged at fifty, uh, fifty thousand.
Well, uh, okay, so we, we're with Madam, uh, City Attorney. We've had a motion and a second. We've had discussion.
It's time to vote.
It's time to vote.
Three, seven, one, three, seven, two.
I'm going to start with all, since, you know, I'm trying to follow this, you know, discuss, discussion, rush through the agenda and take them all together. Uh, I'm being a little speedy, but, uh...
Well, I, I think the appropriate motion, since there is a motion and a second to tell all of these items as consent items, your motion would be to amend that motion to take all of the items except the one you don't want to take or the two.
Okay, so do you want to make the motion, John?
I do make the motion that, that does, um, resolutions in excess of fifty thousand dollars, which includes zero-one, three, seven, one, three, seven, two, are held over.
Is there a second?
Second.
Proper motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
All in opposition? So, so his motion passes and so...
Now, you've got to have a vote on the main motion.
Now, we'll go back to our main motion, uh, in it, where we've had discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then those items pass.
Resolution is being introduced for the first time, zero-one, three, seven, six through sixty-one, three, eight, eight.
My counsel rules, these resolutions will lay over for one week.
Call for public hearings. Four-one, three, eight, eight, call for public hearing to approve the application of Wayne McCathen and Michael Martin doing business as Port City Petty Care for a certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate a petty care service scheduled for April thirtieth.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second and in discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Vote. Public hearing is called.
Announcements.
Ms. Rich.
Oh, thank you very much. I'd like to announce that on April thirtieth, the Public Services Committee, which consists of, um, Councilmen Small and Davis and my... of Councilmen Small and Daves and myself as Chair, will be meeting to go over the towing ordinance amendment. Again, this will be Tuesday, April 30th, at 1:30 in the conference room, and we will also get out a press release as that date grows closer. I would like to take this opportunity to wish everybody a very happy Easter, and as the mayor said, build family memories. And also Passover begins Friday night for the next eight evenings or days afterwards as well. So a happy Passover to the Jewish community as well. Thank you.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to announce that I have a community meeting coming up for all the residents in District 1 that live in the Moffett Road area, including Boterra. This meeting will be held on Thursday, April 25th, that's not this Thursday, but the next one, at the Forest Hill Elementary School, starting at 6 o'clock. And, Mr. Vice President, I would just like to ask the citizens, have you been, have you gone to a state meeting recently? The city is steadily trying to take authority from the city and move it up to the state. We keep you informed by having these meetings. I haven't been to a state meeting. I don't know if a state calling or meeting to inform the citizens or nothing. They come, put anything in your right away they want to put in there, don't call you, don't tell you nothing, because that's not what they do. That's what we do locally. We hold local meetings inside our district to inform our citizens what we doing, but once you leave this level of government, you can scratch that off. We're the most effective level of government in this nation. Nobody can beat, beat the government. In a way, at the, at this meeting, we have a number of special guests coming. We're going to have representatives from the Walmart Distribution Center coming. They're going to be talking about jobs. We're going to have representatives from Oster coming, they're going to be talking about jobs and job training. We're going to have representatives from Bishop State coming, they're going to be talking about job training, workforce development, how you can get to, get trained to go and get you one of the good jobs. And we're going to have many other people coming. So I'm going to ask the residents of Moffett Road to make sure you get ready, put it on your calendar. Looking forward for seeing you on the 25th at the Forest Hill Elementary School. On last Saturday, the Bay Area Women and the other organizations in Trinity Gardens put on the Trinity Gardens Annual Festival. Outstanding event. We counted over 300 people in attendance to this event. They had to have food, games. It was outstanding and it. We got sidewalks coming to Oshel Road. I just announced that going to be five ditches closed in Trinity Gardens. Just like to say that a lot of good things is happening in District 1. Thank you.
Mr. Williams?
Thank you very much. Just remind everyone that, well, I know Mr. Small has other things to do on Sunday, 7:00 a.m. down by the Riverside Lloyd Station Community. It will be over. I'm talking about meat, sausage, and eggs, and biscuits, and fruit, coffee before 8:00. Come and join us down by Riverside Lloyd Station Community, just south of Halls Mill Road. I also want to bring to the attention of the council, I'll be talking to each one of you after I consulted with our attorney, but Mobile Police Department has provided me with a report without giving any details. We have a business on Halls Mill Road that is not acting appropriately, and I will be recommending, based on their recommendation, that we revoke their business license. Thank you.
Mr. Williams, Mr. Daves?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I have some good news to share with the people of the city of Mobile today. I, and it has to do with the significant improvement in the city's financial condition that has occurred over the last five years, those years in which this mayor and this council served the people of the city of Mobile. We recently received the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which are our financial statements for the fiscal year ended September 30, 2018. And so what I did is I went back and looked at the, the report we got for the year ended 2013. Five-year period is the period that this mayor and this, this council have been in office. So if you go back and you look, in 2013, the city had 297 million, call it 300 million dollars in long-term debt. At the end of the last fiscal year, we were down to 231 million, and Mr. West informs me that as of today, we're down to 205 million. So that's a reduction of $92 million. Basically, a third of our long-term debt has been liquidated. Five years ago, we had an unassigned general fund balance of negative 4.3 million, and at the end of the last fiscal year, it was a positive 388 million dollars. That, that represents a significant reserve and about in line with what the rating agencies would like us to maintain. Our total revenue in 2013 was 304 million dollars, and last year it was 351 million dollars. Our general fund expense, that's our operating account, went from 43 million dollars in 2013 to 34 million dollars, a $9 million reduction in operating expenses. How did that occur? Well, one of the ways it occurred was there are 300 fewer employees working at the city of Mobile than there were five years ago. All that has been accomplished through attrition. In capital, we spent 13 million dollars in 2013 and 31 million dollars in the last fiscal year, and it all note, 21 million dollars of that is represented by CIP. There have, there have been increases in certain areas of the general fund, and engineering, development, and Build Mobile, and this is connected to CIP, up 2.2 million dollars. Public safety, up 10 million dollars. Public works, up 4 million dollars. And EMS, up 5 million dollars. A lot of that representing the raises we've given our public safety employees. So I would say that the city's financial condition is significantly, some might even say unbelievably better financial condition than it was five years ago. It is, I know, if you're in a strong finance, if you're, if you're a municipality or a business, and you're, and you're in a strong financial position, you can do almost anything, but if you're in a weak financial position, you can't do almost anything. So I, I think that, I think that this is a very impressive record, and I wanted to share it with my colleagues and with the general public. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Daves.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm going to go on to Mr. Richardson.
Yeah.
I want to ask her a response.
Well, I would just like to say, in 2013, the city of Mobile ended up with a positive over 3 million dollars. We did not end up in a deficit. All you have to do is go get the CAFRA report, comprehensive, annual comprehensive financial report for city of Mobile, where the auditors came in and audited city of Mobile, and see if the auditors say that we ended up in the red. It's against the law to end the city up in the red. We did not end up in the red. That is some, that's some statement was made up, was generated by the finance director or somebody else, and they put it out there to the public. I was on this council, that's just like saying, a council member sit here and watch the city go down, and it did not happen, it's gossip.
Okay, now, Mr. Vice President, first part of Mr. Richardson's statement mischaracterizes what I said. I said we had an unassigned negative balance in the general fund. The second part is, if he doesn't believe that's in the CAFRA, I'll be happy to show it to him after the meeting.
What, what, what's the, we get to what you're unassigned, what was the bottom line? How much money did the city have at the end of 2013? Over 3 million dollars?
So, right, we're not going, I think this has been an ongoing five-year discussion. What we can say is since Joel and I joined this council, things have gotten better. Let's just put it that way.
Not crying, brother.
It has gotten better.
Some things have gotten better, some things have gotten worse.
Joel, well, you might be right. Since the Lavar Charles Manzi and Joel Thomas Daves joined this desk, things have gotten better. That's what we'll say. We don't have to go back to 2013.
John, you get that?
I want that to be the next headline. But let's see, Mr. Small?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Yes, sir.
This coming Saturday, one of my favorite times of the year, especially in District 3, we are having our seventh annual Easter egg hunt, which will be, again, this coming Saturday, April 20th, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Taylor Park, 1055 Baltimore Street, inviting all the kids in District 3 and the city of Mobile to come out this coming Saturday for free food, drinks, ice cream, spacewalk, and Easter bunny, and friends. And plus, we have over 4,000, over 4,000 Easter eggs that is already being provided. Very excited. This is brought by myself, City Councilman CJ Small, my office, the city of Mobile, Kappa Apesai, the Port City Sackliners, Cumulus Broadcast, Blue Bell Ice Cream, The Waterfront Mission, also inspire you and also Buffalo Rock. Just not inviting just the kids in District 3, but the kids all across the city of Mobile. But this is a family fun event. Again, it is this coming Saturday, April 20th, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. And of course, as my colleague, Mr. Williams, has stated, I will be at the Pine Crest Cemetery this coming Sunday for the Easter sunrise services, inviting all the citizens in District 3 to come out. If you don't head over to Councilman Williams' district, and again, this is a one-hour event, very nice and very spiritual. Again, meet me at Pine Crest at 7:00 a.m. on Easter Sunday morning. On last Saturday, the sixth annual Crate Murder Trail Run has supposed to have been held, starting in Arlington Park. It had been postponed until Saturday, April 27. Again, April 27, inviting all the citizens in Mobile and surrounding areas to come out on April 27, Saturday, at 8:00 a.m. to participate in the Crate Myrtle Trail Ride. Again, this is the sixth annual. And it will end up at the Matinella Park. And also, on that same day at Matinella Park, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., they are having the Art and Palo Peninsula Sound, inviting, again, inviting all the citizens, you know, in the area to come out to Matinella Park, which is 4380 Park Road, Mobile, Alabama. And there would be plenty of things to do, fun, and exciting, from poetry to yoga class, to arts and craft, food and beverages, kayak, canoe. I mean, all this is going on in District 3. So April 27, on that Saturday, will be a busy time in District 3, inviting all citizens to come out and enjoy what South DIP and District 3 has to offer. Thank you, Vice President Manzi.
Thank you, Mr. Small. I want to start my announcements by wishing all of the residents, both of District 2 and the citywide, a very happy and pleasant and meaningful resurrection Sunday to those who celebrate and Passover. I hope that you'll have a meaningful Passover. We believe he lives because he lives in all of us, and I hope everyone will go and in their own way commemorate this very important occasion. There will be Easter egg hunts all around the city. I'm not trying to duplicate that. If you're in search of an egg, it won't be hard to find. Councilmember Small is giving you the remedy. Go to where?
Taylor Park.
If you're searching, he gave me one. My goodness. Now, you have no reason to be hungry. The week leading up to Thanksgiving, Christmas, or Easter, you might not want to eat an egg, but it will feed you. So I'm not having an Easter egg. If you're in search of an egg or basket, there's plenty of that out there. Saturday, I will be in our nursing homes, giving to our seniors for Easter. We have three that we've singled out, and we'll be working with business leaders to do that on Saturday. So no, I'm not having an Easter. I've had a couple of calls where I heard about, if you heard about it, you need to go to it, because that's where it will be. And on Saturday, what time you start, Councilman Small?
Yeah, 3:00, 3 to 5.
3 to 5, at Taylor Park.
Taylor Park.
It's not that far from District 2. He's going to have 5, 4,000 eggs, including this one maybe, that'll be out there. And so, again, let's enjoy the festivities, but let's remember the reason for the season. I am appreciative of Pastor Cleveland McFarlane. I had opportunity on last Friday to go represent the city at his 30th pastoral anniversary banquet. The president of our National Baptist Convention was the speaker, very well attended, certainly an event that he's deserving of. He's been here 30 years, been active all 30, and we appreciate him. We have some community meetings that we'll be planning. When we finish this series, we'll be right at our 70th community meeting, and I join Councilman Richardson in saying that you very rarely hear meetings from the state legislature, but, but you always can find some city meeting that this council is putting on, whether it's a district meeting, a meeting of focus on this new bridge, we've got one coming up in the Down the Bay community. And so I totally agree with him. Any further announcements from the council?
Yes, sir. I want to close my announcement out, my comments out by saying, it was the boldness of this council to extend the penny. It was the boldness of this council over the opposition of the mayor, over the veto of the mayor. And I believe we had a council member that's on this desk that voted against the penny.
She did.
Let me just say, the penny generates 32 million dollars a year. Time five years is 160 million dollars. If you subtract that out from what Councilmember Daves told us, this city would be broke. This city would be in the red. It's the boldness that we were managing so well. No, 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 no. This council voted in the penny that generates 32 million dollars a year. Time five years, we're talking about 160 million dollars. That's why the city being good, because of the boldness of this council.
All right. The whole council, this, they've got a motion, you want to go now?
Some old.
Probably motion, probably motion, is there any discussion?
I ain't got any.
All in favor?
Aye.
Beating the.
Boldly moving the church.
Joel.